Good evening. Welcome to our August 25th School Board Work Session. The time is now 5:30 PM. The School Board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge we're residing on the traditional land of the Denai people. As a community, we create supportive learning environments where all students thrive. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the role?
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Ms. Dulean is expected. Ms. Maple?
Here.
Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Going into our work for tonight, we have two items up. We're going to begin with our policy work on Article 6, and then we will spend about an hour or so on that, and then we will move into our other agenda item with our resolution. I would like to take a second to remind Board members, if we could speak straight into our microphones tonight. If you try to talk to the side of them, your voice does not get picked up very well. So please try to remember to speak in front of them. And with that, Ms. Deanna Dillard is here with Student Discipline and Policy Specialist, along with Dr. Minar, Superintendent. They will continue working with us on Article 6's instruction to get it ready to transfer over to the Association of Alaska School Boards platform. Ms. Dillard?
Thank you very much. I think we're just going to jump right in. So where we left off from last time, we'll be starting with Policy 6141, which is Curriculum Development and Evaluation. Actually, I did want to make one little note. I have not heard consistency or a clear path forward from everybody as far as whether or not to leave notes in, so the legal notes. So I would just ask that as we're looking at a policy, if you feel strongly about keeping a note in, because so far, the decision has been to not keep the legal notes in, but if there's one that you want to see kept in, if you could just let us know. So with that, we'll start with Board Policy 6141. This is Curriculum Development and Evaluation. This is mostly Alaska Association of School Boards language that we chose to keep. It does capture a few of our policies in Curriculum Development, 910 through 910.4. Each of those policies is just a sentence or two, so we did not have a lot of information in those policies. And we did like the information that ASB had in this policy. So with that, I will let you look through it, and if you have any questions or comments.
Questions or comments from the Board in relation to Policy 6141? Mr. Doran?
Thank you, and my question is more a couple of clarifications. On paragraph 3, the last sentence, it says, "The School Board shall discuss its findings with the staff, community, and students." Just better understanding what we mean by "will discuss." I mean, obviously, things can... The reason I come to that is what constitutes discussion? I mean, we get public input to the curriculum pieces. We get public testimony. We have an open discussion as a board for both curriculum and materials. But what is our understanding of "will discuss," whether we... different wording would be more appropriate?
I don't remember exactly a conversation around that specific sentence, so I would, I guess I would say that if it's something that we want to be more specific about what that discussion means, then we could talk about it and add that language.
I also think that it's boilerplate language from ASB that might be more relevant to smaller communities, and feel like, because of all of the systems that you just mentioned, we have in terms of the development of curriculum and also sharing kind of the process around it, that that sentence is probably not needed in policy.
So perhaps, as a follow-up and reflection with that is, since we do have a more thorough... Well, I shouldn't say it's a more thorough. I don't want to make that judgment. But we have a specific process that we do follow to make sure we have public participation, et cetera. Very easy, it might be really just deleting that sentence. Or perhaps, and again, I didn't come with a specific wording, but maybe something to this effect. You know, before adopting a district-wide curriculum, the School Board will ensure a process for public participation. And I am seeing "public" as that's broader, it's staff and students who are involved. I mean, because we include that broad sense of "public." But perhaps either a deletion of that specific line, because I think we're covered in other ways with it and our AR, or we could say that it will ensure, the Board School will ensure public procedure, public participation procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Any other comments or questions in relation to Policy 6141? Mr. Doran?
Okay, and again, clarification. And I may have the terminology wrong, but through the Superintendent to Teaching and Learning, under Pilot Programs, when we have, I think, archived some courses, in that discussion, they've moved into... There was discussion around that for them being considered as pilot programs, that if they had a staff member who would be able to teach that course, that course could be brought forward again. It wasn't... they weren't... it wasn't dropped completely, but I believe the term was archived, and that a principal could request to bring that course back as active. And I think that was under the pilot category. Help me out if I'm wrong on that.
Mr. Beam?
So actually, I think those are two separate things. So you are correct about the archiving, and if we need to bring it back, we can. The pilot process is a separate thing, where if there's a class that does not yet exist, and somebody has an expertise in it, and they want to teach it, then we can do that as a pilot. There's a process for that. And then if we find it to be something that we want to keep with, then the next time the cycle comes around, we would put that into the... or put it on the table to be included in the next cycle. But those are two separate things. You're right on the archive part. That's not the pilot part, because they're two different things.
Okay, so clarification, if I might. Pilots are new course, never been done. The archive, a principal can simply say, "I've got someone to do it. We want to offer this."
In a general, the first part, yes. And the second part, generally, that would be true.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from Board members? Ms. Carol Hubbard?
If you'd just comment, I wanted to say for your benefit, Ms. Dillard, that I like having the notes there from the... Wherever they're from.
Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard. That's a yay for notes. Got it. Okay, anything further on this one from Board members? Seeing none, we will move on. Moving into Policy 6141.2, Recognition of Religious Beliefs and Customs. Ms. Dillard?
Thank you. This cross-references to our 1013 Religious Expression Policy. We edited this policy a lot, using the ASB model policy and our current policy. We also sent this for legal review, and they approved the policy and made some additional edits and approved the policy. We do also have a very robust administrative regulation that goes with this policy, that is currently attached to that 1013, that we will move over to this policy. We had legal review that again, because it had been a while, and there were some very small edits, but for the most part, that AR is ready to go to.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dillard. Anything from the Board? Seeing nothing? Okay. Then we will move on. We will go into Policy 6144, Controversial Issues. Ms. Dillard?
This policy is our 991. So this is a Board policy that was updated in the recent... Recently, the last few years by the School Board. And so we completely pulled over 991, did not use any of the Alaska Association of School Boards policy.
Any questions from the Board? Mr. Doran?
Just quickly, so I understand, so... Because this was one we spent extensive time on and stuff. So that just completely transferred over, no changes in the wording?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none? All right. Policy 6145, Extracurricular and Co-curricular Activities. Ms. Dillard?
So this policy has had a lot of, a lot of work, because it captures policies between 950 and 957. There's close to like 15 policies in that section. They don't all go here. We also have a policy that we'll see today on Activity Travel, which is separate. And then we have a Student-Led Groups versus School-Sponsored Groups policy that we'll also see later. But this captures a lot of our Student Activities policy down into 1. We used, for the most part, I think, our language and did not just use the ASB model, but we did a lot of editing just to clean it up. And I can't think of any or see any major procedural changes for us.
Anything from the Board? Mr. Doran?
Just a thought that we keep under an understanding and maybe can reinforce in AR necessarily here, but in the introduction, one of the things that I think has come to the fore is that when we talk about the development of valuable skills, a furthering of that is the implementation of our academic skills. I mean, what we teach in the classrooms are often brought into what students do. I'm thinking, when we talk about civics, they're implementing that in student government. You know, there are a lot of different crossovers, and I think that's a valuable point to capture, that there's... they are actually implementing skills taught in our core classes and our electives. So I... That goes beyond just the development of valuable skills, you know, learning how to play volleyball or whatever, you know, the specific activity may be. But it's beyond that.
Yes, thank you for that, Mr. Doran. And it calls to mind a policy that we might see today on CTE, and how Dr. Minar included some of that language to tie it over to the academic skills too. So I hear exactly what you're saying, and I can work on that.
Maybe bring that in.
I also just remembered something that was significant about this policy. And I was thinking, because we're moving it completely to administrative regulation, I wasn't thinking of it as policy. But we are changing the academic eligibility for sports. So our current academic eligibility states C average and no Fs, and we're moving towards a C average, or a C with course requirements, which actually aligns with ASB. So that is a procedural change.
Follow up, Mr. Doran?
That will be in AR?
Okay. Currently, it's in policy, which is why I bring it up. But yes, it'll be administrative regulation.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the Board? Seeing none at this time? All right, we will move on. And we will go to 6145.21, Sportsmanship. Ms. Dillard?
We do not have a policy on sportsmanship, so this is a new policy for us. It is the ASB model policy.
Any questions? Seeing none? All right. Policy 6145.22, Concussion in Student Athletes. Ms. Dillard?
This policy was edited using the Alaska Association of School Boards and our 1062.4. We did make... We've made some major edits to the administrative regulation this summer, and that was released this fall. So we did a lot of work to administrative regulation to clean it up. But this policy doesn't present any kind of procedural changes. And we did also have feedback from TBI, Traumatic Brain Injury Consultant through CIRC, that helped us with this policy.
Thank you, Ms. Dillard. Questions from the Board? Mr. Doran?
Okay, in paragraph 2, the second line, "that results in rapid movement of the head causing any change in behavior, thinking, or physical functioning." Concern for the word "any change." I went to "a change," but that "any change" is really, really broad and encompassing, and it may or may not be... It may be coincidental to the potential for concussion. I'm just concerned that it's "any change," and what we mean by that.
So from my experience, whether it's on the field or on the ice when somebody gets hit, it's even... like, if it takes them longer than a couple of seconds to get up, it literally... I like this language because it targets, okay, something is off. Even if it has nothing to do with a concussion, it's a protocol that puts in place, "Let's evaluate this student for concussion. Make sure they're okay before they go out." So I prefer the "any change in behavior" language. I think it encompasses everything it possibly needs to that would alert a coach or anybody on the field or any court or anywhere that something is off with that student, and they need to be scoped out.
Follow up, thank you. And I want to reiterate, I think this is a good policy to have. I mean, besides, it's actually required, and we have protocols on concussion. So I want to emphasize that I am glad we are addressing it. The other two aspects of it, though, that I was looking for addressing is, we have protocols in terms of the athletes and not participating in games or participation until there's a medical clearance or such. That, I'm assuming that travel would be included in that. They would not be traveling with the team or organization, and they're not all team. I mean, they're different groups, but that would also impact that.
I can speak to it real quick.
Ms. Dillard?
There are very specific protocols for return to play that are spelled out in administrative regulation. Those procedures follow OSAA rules too, and then we've spelled it out in administrative regulation. I don't remember specifically travel, but it's return to play and return to academics follow a very specific protocol.
Right, and in here, it talks about that they won't participate in games or practice, but it does not say anything about travel.
So from my experience, anybody under a concussion protocol does not travel. And that's with every sport that I have been involved in. Ms. Gilliam?
I guess is the concern just that... I mean, OSAA has very specific protocols that students have to go to before they're allowed to be participating in any practices. What I'm hearing, your concern is that would a student be allowed to travel with the team even if they're not allowed to participate? And I... my inclination would be no, that they wouldn't be traveling with the team because they would still be under the concussion protocol and not able to participate in that. But I will acknowledge, I don't have the OSAA rules right in front of me right now, but I can pull them up.
Okay, then I would suggest that, as we look at it before it comes, that we get clarity that travel is also included in that, because if they're not healthy enough to be doing these other things, we certainly don't want them away from home and perhaps having some impacts. The other question, unless I did a misread in policy, we don't address anything in terms of the classroom impact, but I know we have protocols about classroom that limits their... Sometimes can limit their participation and involvement in class. So I'm concerned where that plays.
All of that information, Mr. Doran, is in AR. So it's in that AR that we just updated, and that update that we did over this summer helped us get more in line with the ASA guidelines and also helped delineate between ASA and our district practices, since those are kind of two different pieces. It also updated our practices to be more in line with what current provider best practices are as well.
Any other questions, Mr. Doran?
The final two around this reference is, given the seriousness of concussions, and we've learned a lot over it, is whether... where we address possible exposure for the district in providing or supporting activities. I'm not doing this as a... not meaning to do a flash, but if it's serious, we need to be aware of our exposures to that. And a further conversation that I just heard on the radio on Saturday was not for policy discussion tonight, but broadening out our concerns. Issue was brought up on female athletes, especially for eating disorders, that perhaps also should raise to a protocol similar to concussion. So just put in the hopper, nothing to act on tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Anything further from the Board? Seeing nothing, we will move on. Going into 6145.3, Publications. Ms. Dillard?
Thank you. This policy aligns with our 1041.2, which is called Freedom of the Press. We did use a lot of the Alaska Association of School Boards language, but we added, the last two paragraphs are straight from 1041.2.
Any questions from the Board? Mr. Doran?
Quick AR-related question. Guidelines or... Well, guidelines, let's say, for if a principal was to determine that something was not appropriate, are those in AR? Or do we have any place where we address those?
This policy does not... Our policy does not have an AR, nor does the ASB model policy.
Any other questions from the Board? Seeing none? Okay, moving on into Policy 6145.5, Student Organizations and Equal Access.
Thank you. So this is the policy briefly mentioned earlier that captures student organizations in equal access. So this would be student-led organizations. We will have an administrative regulation for this policy that goes into the different procedures for establishing a student-led group. This captures three or four of our policies from the... from 900.
Thank you. Questions from the Board? Seeing none? Okay, moving on. Next, Policy 6146.2, Additional Options for High School Credit. Ms. Dillard?
Thank you. This is our Policy 984.3. The only thing that we added was work experience for credit. That has been a practice with procedures for a while, a long time probably. But it was not in the policy as an other option for high school credit. So we just added that number three.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Doran?
One quick, I didn't have one question. On number... On number three, second line, I believe the word "credits" should be added after "electives," so they can receive up to two high school elective credits. It's be elective singular, but credits plural.
Yep, good catch, Mr. Doran. Another one? Go ahead.
And then on number one, concern, it says prior approval. And this may be a procedural one. I'm thinking of a transfer student who may not have had, been able to get prior approval, but do we need to do that when we review that? Or if a student takes a class and then, you know, at the university, and then finds out that it's, it's something, oh, yeah, this could possibly, I didn't realize it was going to teach me as much about a high school class that I would have otherwise taken. So, I'm just, some provision besides prior, I don't know.
Go ahead, Dr. Minat.
I think prior is important in there. There's a couple of different reasons, and I'll have Mr. Beam expound on those. In terms of transferring students, Teaching and Learning already does kind of a deep dive into transcripts and is flexible where they can be with credit to ensure students stay on track if they're coming from, outside of our system. But I'd like Jane to talk about the process and then the importance of that prior piece of it.
Thank you, yeah. The prior part is very important to us, simply because what we want to avoid is students signing up for certain classes expecting to get credit, and then them coming to us and us saying, "I'm sorry, that does not qualify for whatever it is." And now they wasted their time and their money thinking that they can get something that they really don't have. The process for this isn't hard. There's a form to fill out, and we say, "Okay, go ahead," and then they can move forward with it. We use it quite a bit. As far as the transfers, I cannot think of a time since I've been here that we've had a kid transfer in and bring, and try to get an outside credit. If a kid transfers in, we take all of those credits. Those are not outside credits, that's just a transfer. That's all that is. So, those two things just don't happen at the same time.
Okay, thank you for those. I mainly just wanted to make sure that we're not catching somebody unawares in some ways. I like prior, but I was just looking beyond, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Any other questions? Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Thank you. Do we have any limitations on the work experience? Are there guidelines, or is that somewhere else?
Ms. Gillum?
Yes, there is a whole guideline packet. There is a supervisor evaluation that they do for, on the students or for the students on their work, and students have to submit their time sheets, and there's an approval process for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gillum. Any further questions? Seeing none, we will move to the next, oh, sorry, Dr. Minat.
To catch the earlier edit in number three, I think it's elective, not plural, and then credits.
Oh, good catch, Dr. Minat. Okay, moving on. Policy sixty-one forty-six point four, Reciprocity on Graduation Requirements. Ms. Dillard.
Thank you. This is our policy nine eighty-four point two exactly, and it has a robust administrative regulation that lays out the procedures for this.
Thank you, Ms. Dillard. Questions? Mr. Doran.
A quick question that, again, experience would show whether it's needed or not. I'm thinking of a senior coming, transferring senior and needing one of the high school requirement courses by the state, that the state requires. I was under the understanding, we worked with them in getting their, making sure they have the opportunity to take that course or that credit. But, so just in practice, how does this make sure that we don't catch an incoming senior unawares or in a bind?
Mr. Beam?
Yes, we, so, this does happen every single year. Kids come in, they come in, they don't have certain credits that we require. If it's a senior, we certainly work with the kid. There are many times we just waive that requirement because they are seniors, and they don't have a chance to make that up through no fault of their own. We'll write something up, a memo, I'll sign it, and we'll excuse that child from that specific thing. So, we do work with students. We would never keep a senior from graduating because they transfer in without something.
Quick follow-up.
Follow-up?
And in terms of a state-required course, can that also be waived by the district?
Typically, the few state, well, actually, the only state-required course we have is State Studies, Alaska Studies. And typically, if they transfer in from somewhere else, they have something, we can replace that. So, their own state where they're from, that happens quite a bit.
Okay, great. And that's what I'm most focused on.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Thank you, Mr. Beam. Anything further from the board? Seeing none, we will move on into policy sixty-one forty-six point five, Differential Requirements for Individuals with Exceptional Needs. Ms. Dillard.
Thank you. This is a brand-new policy to our district. We did not have anything that captured this. The Special Education Department did look through this policy and agree that it's a good policy, and had content for administrative regulation, too. So, with that, I, no questions.
Okay, questions from the board? Mr. Doran.
Under standardized assessment, paragraph two, the first line, the words "must take," so, students with disabilities must take all statewide standards, et cetera. In the first one, well, my question, this question, we say they must take them, but state law says they don't have to. It's a parent option. So, I'm just looking at, we're saying one thing, but the reality.
Ms. Dillard.
I hear what you're saying. I think that we could cross-reference that sixty-twenty parent involvement in decision-making, because that's where that's addressed, because it's not cross-referenced here.
Anything further, Mr. Doran?
No, that's it on that.
Okay. Anything further from any other board members? Seeing none. We will continue on. Policy sixty-one forty-seven, Alaska Reads Act Intervention Programs. Ms. Dillard.
Thank you. This is also new to our district. ASB model policy language, we didn't make any changes. It's, for the most part, completely a copy of the statute.
Thank you, Ms. Dillard. Questions? Mr. Doran.
Paragraph one, I would suggest we either delete it or reword it to, this is law. It's obvious when, like, that last sentence, whether it changes, if the law changes, will change. That's true with anything. I think this was written at the time with the mind that, well, yeah, this is kind of a thing we're trying out as state, the state is, it's been for years now, several years, fully implemented. So, I think that, I think it makes most sense just to delete that part.
I would support that, Mr. Doran. Go ahead, Ms. Dillard.
And we also have a policy in student, Article Five, that we won't see tonight, that is our retention and acceleration policy, which has a reference to how that interacts with the Alaska Reads Act, so it is covered there.
Follow-up, Mr. Doran?
Follow-up, actually, you got one ahead of me because I had a notation in terms of retention, and basically, looking at that is, we can arguably say our retention policy is different than it was, but effectively, it's the same, so I had a question about the retention piece.
Anything further from the board? Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Can we, sorry, can we go backward to Mr. Doran's paragraph one deletion? I missed that, and I was reading something else, and when I got there, I want to make sure I'm clear on what his suggestion was.
Oh, that we delete it because it's basically unneeded, that we do what it states. That's why.
Are you talking about the very first?
The very first that says, "While the Alaska Reads Act is current, the measures outlined here will supersede the district's policy," and goes on that very first paragraph, is an unneeded paragraph because we, this is something that we have been doing.
It's just redundant.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you, thank you.
And as Ms. Dillard pointed out, it's also referenced in another point in policy. Yep. Mr. Doran?
My other comment on this one was, those numbers, one to eleven, could be probably taken out of policy and put into AR and shorten the policy.
Good suggestion, Mr. Doran. Thank you. Anything further from board members? Seeing none? Excellent. Give Ms. Dillard a minute to make her notes. Okay, we'll move on to policy sixty-one forty-eight, Early Education Programs. Ms. Dillard.
Thank you. This is also a brand-new policy to our district that came out of the Alaska Reads Act. And that's it.
Okay. Questions, board? Seeing none, Mr. Doran?
My question here for consideration is, this is very specific to the Reads Act, and I was looking at ways to broaden it out in terms of our support for early education programs. I'm not sure that that's, I don't think this is inappropriate, but I'm looking at, we may, and I think we have had early education programs that have been separate from the Reads Act. And I think that's one of our missions and should stay so. I'd love administrative feedback to that.
Dr. Minat?
Yeah, I was just rereading that paragraph to see if we could broaden it, and whether or not it's already broad enough. But I would be supportive of that, and I think Ms. Dillard and I, between now and the board's first reading, could add some language in there to express support for early education programs, even outside of what's available through kind of the additional ADM, through the Reads Act, and maybe talk about different grants we pursue and different opportunities there that we might have as a district to offer early education programs.
Thank you. And I, and, yeah, and I especially think in terms of grant, it may be grants we get versus grants from the state, their procedure of grants under the Reads Act is very different than if it would come down to being part of the base student allocation or some other allocation that would be made, so, or that we might allocate within our budget.
Yeah, and I would say, if you have additional ideas in the meantime, too, let us know, and we can try to incorporate that into this policy.
Okay, yeah, thanks. And if we can, you know, just, you're looking help, and I'll think of that as a way of broadening it out, so it's not just specific to if we get a grant under the Reads Act that we could, okay.
Anything further from the board? Seeing none, we will move on to policy sixty-one fifty-one, Class Size. Ms. Dillard.
Thank you. This policy does align with a current policy that we have, nine sixty point three-one. Class size is, however, it's specific to elementary only. Our current policy, that current policy was last updated in nineteen eighty-three, and it set a standard of twenty-five students with options for aides in larger classes. This language is from Alaska Association of School Boards specifically related to the updates in House Bill fifty-seven.
Thank you, Ms. Dillard. Questions? Ms. Carol Hubbard? I see the look.
Where are we currently with, with class size? No, that's not an appropriate question, but I want to know.
Dr. Minat?
No, we're definitely over the target limits here, and there is some language for first reading that I'd like to pull into this. Because as this piece of legislation went through the legislature last year, many superintendents said our districts are already over these class sizes, and without a significant boost in the base student allocation, there's no way that we're going to be able to go backwards in terms of meeting this. And so, I do want to provide some additional information in terms of what the superintendent does if we don't meet these things, and it's important for the board and the public to understand that we're not currently there. So, correct me if I'm wrong, class size is twenty-six, twenty-nine, and thirty-two for our targets. So, twenty-six in elementary, twenty-nine in middle school, and thirty-two at high school.
Ms. Julian?
I have a follow-up as well. What's her class size, is that charters?
Significantly lower than that.
Anything further from the board? Mr. Doran? Did you have a follow-up, Ms. Julian?
I know it's significantly lower, but is it around twenty-two per class? Is that right?
It is. That's correct.
Usually four K through eight.
Correct.
Mr. Doran?
So, I think this is, from your comments, Dr. Minat, this is to try to be reflective of what the newest legislation is working towards. But there are provisions, they, I believe in the law itself, it gives that understanding that these may not be feasible, and districts could do a plan on how they're trying to address them in those ways. And I think this needs to be reworded in light of that, because when we say that they may not exceed the following, that's a clean statement from us, let alone, and even the legislature did not, my understanding of, my memory of reading it did not say specifically, "They may not exceed." They recognize they may exceed that. And I think someone reading our policy, we should have their, some better understanding of what our efforts are to keep them as low as possible. We're not there. And so, I think we need to do some better rewording of that, unless we're going to say, "We will not exceed," and then that's...
Dr. Minat?
Yeah, we'll take a look at that and refer to HB fifty-seven and what's lined out there and make some potential amendments for first reading in this policy.
Mr. Doran, I'm gonna put you back in the queue. I have other people ahead of you. Mr. Burgess?
Thank you. Yeah, I believe that there is a reporting requirement for class sizes in HB fifty-seven as well. Is that, is that the case? And I don't see that reflected in this policy. And I think that the, part of the intent behind that is, when we can't meet those class sizes, they want to know why. And so, I would, I would like to see something along those lines incorporated into policy, I think. And perhaps we can go as far as to discuss funding even. I'm not sure if that's appropriate for policy or not, but...
I mean, I think that would go to exactly the reasoning why we wouldn't meet these class sizes. It's a pretty simple statement that if we receive adequate funding for education here in Fairbanks, then we would meet these class sizes, and that's our plan. But we'll take a look at that. To the reporting aspect, I would say, we don't generally put reporting requirements within policy, just because that's something that we do on the administrative side, and we know that we have to follow through. But I like your idea in terms of thinking about the planning that's required for the district and how we might discuss our support for adequate funding and policy to ensure that we can meet the class-sized targets that the state would like us to meet.
Thank you, Dr. Minat. Ms. Julian?
Thank you. I'm just going to speak in support of this policy as it's drafted right now, with the full understanding that this is an unfunded mandate from the state. We, from an anecdotal perspective, having three young children, one in kindergarten, one in second grade, and one in fourth grade, I'm around families that have similar-aged children quite a bit. And when I hear them talk about charter school, the number-one thing that they say is that the class sizes are smaller. So, why wouldn't I put them on every single waiting list? And those are, of course, those families that have the privilege to choose. It was very clear that this is a mandate, that the state wants school districts to support. This is the number-one thing that families say that they want to... support. This is the number-one thing that families say that they want to support. They want us to prioritize class sizes above everything else. This is the number-one thing that our educators are also saying, please lower the class sizes, make them more manageable. I fully, fully understand that this is a completely unfunded mandate, as has been given to every single school district. However, I think that having the final sentence in here, that we're going to establish a procedure to reduce class sizes when possible and appropriate, gives us enough wiggle room. I do think that we could add in some other reporting, like Mr. Burgess, I like that idea a lot, if it's, if it's, if we can do that. And then, of course, making sure that there is a little bit of that softening of that it may not exceed the following, that it, you know, shall not exceed or should not exceed instead of may not. But I very much support this policy, and I'm glad that we're adopting it, because it, it shows what we can work towards.
Thank you, Mrs. Dillian. Mr. Dorn?
Just a question about what mixed-grade classes refer to.
Mr. Dr. Myer?
Yeah, there was an exemption within HB 57 that talked about, I believe, like your band and orchestra classes or your PE classes, and so it was referring to those courses could be well over these target class-size kind of requirements. And that was the intent in the law, I guess, when they added that, is thinking of those mixed-grade levels within those larger elective classes.
Okay. That makes sense. The terminology of mixed-grade could be confusing with multi-age, which, in my feeling, would have the same class-size consideration as straight-grade classes. The concern for other, you know, I'm thinking of social studies classes or science classes or those types of things, which can be mixed, especially at the high school level, particularly might be mixed-grade. I do understand that, you know, music, et cetera, might be larger or smaller groups. So that exception I could see, but I was concerned with the confusion over multi-grade classes.
Yeah, if I remember.
Or mixed-grade, rather.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, that's the exact terminology in statute, but we'll double-check that that is indeed the language that they use within law.
Okay. And that it would not refer to multi-grade or...
Correct.
Mr. Burgess?
Thank you. So recognizing we're using the term "class size" here, and I think that's because that's what appears in HB 57 as well. But when I think about PTR, people-teacher ratio versus class size, that's really not, that's really, it's like that there's two teachers, and I know we have some courses where we, where we use two teachers, thinking of the, one of the pilot courses that we did a field trip on in the curriculum committee. And is, is, are those classes also going to, to be restricted, or are we just not going to have two teachers in a class? And I'm, I'm just kind of wondering how that, you know, because we could have a PTR of 23 with, with 46 students if we have two teachers, right? So I'm just kind of thinking, how do we reconcile that, or is that something we need to address here?
Dr. Myer?
I'm not sure that we need to address that specific instance. I think that line that says the target average class size may not exceed is kind of the important part in there, and that's oftentimes what people get confused with PTR in general, is that it's a average target, and that means that oftentimes some of our courses will have far fewer than the class-size PTR, and some will have, you know, considerably more based on what the subject area is. So I, I think it's covered in there with that target average class size, but if you feel differently, we can try to add some additional language.
I think that's fair. That, that's helpful. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Anything further on this policy from the Board? Seeing nothing further, we will move on into Policy 6153, School-Sponsored Trips. Ms. Dillard, back to you.
Thank you. This policy captures quite a few policies in the 900s addressing travel. We did just implement a travel, new travel handbook, that is a K-12 travel handbook, because we have a lot of administrative regulation that speaks to travel, and we wanted it to be in one place and consistent for all grades when it pertains to each grade. So that's actually online. Now you can see the travel handbook posted as an exhibit. But this policy, as far as procedural change goes, the procedural change here is when the school board will be required to approve district travel. So in our current policies and administrative regulations, it's not 100% consistent. It uses language like "out of district," or it might say, in another one, it might say "past Denali or Delta," or it might say "out of the Denali or Delta borough." But in summary, what our policies say is that the school board has to approve middle school travel beyond Delta and Denali, and elementary school travel up to Delta and Denali, if it's an overnight, and beyond. So this current policy would change that procedure to where a school board is only approving travel if it is out of state for all grades.
Thank you, Ms. Dillard. I would like to just add my two cents into this one, just going off of something that Mr. Dorn had brought up earlier, going back to the concussion protocol policy, if we do update that with travel language, if we could just have a cross-reference to that in this policy, I think that would be great. That way it's covered, I think that's something that qualifies under school-sponsored trips, so I'd like to see a cross-reference there for the concussion protocol. Questions from the Board? Mr. Dorn?
I will preface my question regarding support for changing it to travel outside the state, because we do that on a regular basis, and, and I remember the days that we had to get approval to go to Chena Hot Springs, because it was kind of like at the edge of the, so I like, I just want to say, I like the change, and I think it's appropriate. Under the section on the bottom of page 17, the section highlighted District Support and Fund Receiving, the third paragraph, that the district does not support travel that is organized in another way sponsored by a non-district entity. I think it's better if we state something in the positive rather than the negative, and that the important, and I think, I'm glad to see this in here, because I've seen it become problematic, especially on the staff leave parts, et cetera. But that maybe we could stay, student, excused absences for student activities and administrative leave for absences of staff will not be granted, will, I know I'm getting into that negative, but maybe you could work on the wording for it, but we could do it more positively, shorter, but the fact that non, non-district entity travel is, does not warrant student excused absence, or although, we won't grant it as an activity absence, maybe that's a distinction, because a parent can always excuse their child. But, and you, you get my point, and I think to relook at this, but I think it's an important thing, and especially on the administrative leave part, that, you know, just because you're sponsoring something doesn't mean you get leave.
I would support that, Mr. Dorn. I, I looked at it a few times, and I had a lot of the same thoughts that you did, but then went back to realizing parents can still call their kids out, and so just a rephrasing, so I support that. Thank you. Anything further from Board members? Seeing nothing further, we will go into Policy 6155, Challenging Courses by Examination. And before I turn it to Ms. Dillard, we will wrap it up right here with Board policies. That way we can get into our resolution. So turning it over to you, Ms. Dillard, for Challenging Courses by Examination.
Okay, thank you. This is policy language that we had in our other options for high school credit. ASB just presents it as its own policy, so we moved it over to the 6155. It's not in the options for alternative credit anymore. The only thing that we changed here is we did add the specific mathematics, language arts, science, social studies, and world languages. So we put in those specific classes, because those are the ones that are approved under the, are covered under the statute.
Thank you, Ms. Dillard. Questions from the Board? Seeing none? Seeing none. Okay. With that, we will end it here on Article 6. So we have, the next time we pick up, we will pick up with Policy 6172, Special Education. Thank you, Administration, for being here and helping us with our work tonight, and thank you, Board, with this. At this time, the Board will take a five-minute recess. Board members, please be back at 6:30. All right, Board, welcome back. We are now back from recess, and we are gonna continue on with our work. Jumping into our resolution, the draft of Safe Spaces: Strong Futures Standing With Our Immigrant School Community Resolution is before the Board to review and make corrections before adoption at the September 2 regular school board meeting. I will turn the floor over to Mr. Burgess, who was one of the main drafters of this resolution.
Thank you. So this resolution that's before us, something that I worked on with Ms. Maple, after receiving a request from an immigrant in this community to take action to support our immigrants in the face of what's happening in the, with ICE and the federal government. There are, there are, of course, ethical considerations here, but there are also legal considerations regarding, you know, just exactly what we are, how we interact, how the district staff interact with federal law enforcement, and what needs to be in place in order for district staff to turn over information or allow access to schools. So we have... So we have an AR that deals with that legal side of things, I think, fairly well. I do think there may be some opportunities to improve the AR as well as develop policy to support the AR even more now and in the future. But this resolution is really just a statement of support that notes what is happening on the federal level all around the nation, what our stance is on that. And it's, it's really intended to show strong support for our immigrant families and staff. And I think that, you know, I thank everyone for being willing to agenda this in work session, because I think that we can improve the language here. And, yeah, I guess I'll leave it there, maybe.
Okay. So at this time, before we open it up for questions, I just want to take a second to remind the Board that this is a very sensitive issue, so let's please handle it as such, be civil with our discourse tonight while we discuss this. And with that, anybody have questions, comments, concerns, adjustments? I am looking to you, Board. Ms. Carol Hubbard.
My first question would be that upon adoption of something of this nature, does this change our policy, or does this change our procedures that we currently have in place?
Mr. Burgess?
I mean, no. Resolutions don't necessarily give any direction to, for policy or administration. I think we can include resolved language that would suggest that that's a direction that we want the administration to move in. I have not included that here in this draft. I have seen other resolutions in other districts that, that would suggest that that's something that they sometimes do. I did, we did work with Dr. Minert. We got feedback from Dr. Minert when we were putting this together, and avoided policy language in part because of that, and because we do have a good AR already. However, yeah, so, so really, again, this is not, this is not policy. This is not change procedure. It is a statement by the Board, and that's it. I don't know if Administration would have anything to add there.
Dr. Minert?
I think you summed it up correctly in that it, it doesn't necessarily direct the work of Administration. I've, my team and I have drafted an administrative regulation that covers some of this, and so I think what Mr. Burgess is saying is that the resolution provides more context around the subject, and kind of a supportive statement for students and families and community that might be impacted with the topic at hand.
Thank you, Dr. Minert. Mr. Doran? Ms. Julian? I saw two hands.
Go ahead.
Any, many, mighty mo.
I've talked a lot, I will get.
Yeah. Ms. Julian, you go ahead. Mr. Doran can be put in the queue.
Um, at first, I want to thank Mr. Burgess and Ms. Maple for bringing this forward. And also, I think that in bringing it forward, it led to last week what Dr. Minert sent out, which was a, you know, pretty clear communication, similar to what we've seen communications from, I'll even just state, the Anchorage School District, and that was in response to a, an FBI notice that went out from the Anchorage, in Anchorage, and then the Anchorage School District sent out a very similar kind of communication to all families and all staff members, saying, these are the rights, these are the responsibilities, this is, you know, this is, this is what will happen if ICE comes to school. And those all follow our, our law. Where I look at this policy, and I've done a lot of work in the last week, I'll, just to give you some context of my background, prior to moving to Alaska almost 13 years ago, I lived in Colorado, and I specifically worked with a, an organization that had a school that almost 100% served immigrant students. And it was a small school, secondary school, that had about 80 students, and we supported their education. So I worked with a lot of immigrant families and a lot of immigrant students. And so in, in going through this process, and I also spoke to the same staff member who, who approached Mr. Burgess and Ms. Maple about wanting the Board to say something. And I reached out to several different staff members that I know that are in the Denver School District, and Jefferson County School District, and Adams County School District, all of which have resolutions that they've passed. Their resolutions, though, are a lot different than the resolution that's on the table here. And they also have a very, very large immigrant community in that area of the country. And when, so, thank you, Bobby, or Mr. Burgess, when you brought this up tonight, you stated that it's, it's really a stance on where, on our, where we stand in relation to what's happening in our community with ICE. And I agree that it is one of the most basic responsibilities of leaders in our community to provide accurate information on, that mitigates confusion, and also provides guidance, and ensures community members feel safe. And so when I look at the resolution, my, where I'm coming at this from, and also in talking to quite a few people who work with immigrant communities, again, not necessarily here, but in Colorado, the, the focus should be in outlining legally what we have responsible, outlining what we can and cannot do, giving people information that helps keep them feel safe, that helps, helps them feel safe, but does so in a very kind of pragmatic approach. And because regardless, you know, this, we're talking about federal, federal policies, federal laws, and we, of course, have to obey federal policies and federal laws. So I'm glad that we're here in a work session. I have quite a few adjustments that I'd like to make, but I don't want to wordsmith right now. What I want to, what I'm asking kind of the, maybe to, and I don't want to just point out Mr. Burgess and Ms. Maple, but the Board as a whole, as we look at, as we consider doing a resolution, and also to the Administration, what is the goal of the Administration? I know one of those is, you know, to Mr. Burgess's point, to make a stance, what, what our stance is in response to ICE activity. My hope is that, I believe that our responsibility is to ensure that we are developing policies that comply with the law, that support our staff, and that protect the safety and privacy of our students. So in doing this, are we moving closer to what I feel like our main objective is as a Board? Or is this more about making a stance? And could it be both? So I'm just, those are, that's my, where my thoughts are going into this.
Thank you, Ms. Julian. Mr. Burgess?
So first, I just want to, you know, point out that when we say we obey federal policies and federal laws, we, we only are required to obey those policies that are legal. If a policy, if a federal policy is not constitutional or is not legal, we, nobody should obey it. So that's my first comment there. But yes, if there is something that is legal, if there is a law on the books, then yes, we follow it. This outlines, what I've, what I've drafted here does outline multiple applicable federal and state laws, starting, in fact, with the Supreme Court 1982 decision in Plyler versus Doe, that under the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment, no public school district can deny children access to free public education based on their immigration status or the immigration status of their parents. So we are, this outlines the laws that we should be following, that, and, you know, it goes into FERPA as well. So I think that we've got that piece of it. Now, we also outline in the resolution that we have a student body that is, that includes a significant amount of people of color, including immigrants, as well as staff that are immigrants, or refugees, or international staff. So I think that we, I think this gets at our mission of educating all students and providing a safe environment in which to educate them. And it also outlines the laws and the, of course, it doesn't go into the details of the boundaries of those laws, but that's, that is covered in AR as well.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Ms. Maple?
I just wanted to speak to the, the phrasing of it taking a stance, because I think that the intention here and what this accomplishes as written is less of a statement of opinion or a statement of, a judgment statement, and is instead an articulation of, like, like Mr. Burgess said, what laws are already in place, what administrative regulations in place, why we, you know, where we find ourselves today, and what, why this administrative regulation is relevant, and then articulates why it is that this is a relevant thing for us to bring to the forefront, specifically talking about the diversity within our school population, and serves, serves to inform, like, like Ms. Julian said, you know, as a, as a resolution can do, it serves to inform our community of what can and cannot, should and should not happen at our schools. So, you know, having an administrative regulation certainly serves to tell all of our building administrators and our teachers that they have something to lean on if a situation comes up, and that's really powerful. And Dr. Minert and the Administration sending that out to families is because we know that we don't expect families to read all of our AR. We don't expect families to, especially if it's somebody that might not have, speak English as a first language, we're not expecting people to be familiar with all of our administrative regulations, or any of them for that matter. So we shared them directly to say, hey, in case this is an issue or something that you're concerned about, here it is. And I think that this does the same thing, that this says, hey, as a parent in the district, you are not expected to be aware of all of the ins and outs of how our district works, of FERPA. I hadn't heard of FERPA until I got on the school board, and I've had school kids in the district for many, many years. So there's so many pieces to this that I don't think folks are expected to be aware of, and in the climate we find ourselves in right now, we already have seen in the lower 48, and I'm, I don't know if we'll have the data to show it here, but I know that we've heard reports from other school districts that we are seeing families keep their kids home because they're afraid of their kids being either, of their kids being taken away from them while they're at school. And I think it's really important that we make it really clear that no judgment statement, no agreement with what ICE may or may not do, that's not allowed to happen because of FERPA, because we have a ton of policy in place that says, like, that my, my brother can't go to the school and take my kid because he's not on the list, and that we have policy in place, the reason that we have, you know, lists of adults that are allowed to pick up our kids is because we have all of these policies in place that keep our kids safe at school. And this is a particular topic, or a particular population that we are clarifying is safe at school from a very specific fear that people have. And I think, you know, when we drafted it, Bobby and, Mr. Burgess and I were very intentional in trying to remove any judgment statements, any moral statements from it, so that we're leaning on fact, and we're leaning on, you know, descriptors of our community, and not, not bringing our own political leanings into it, without totally watering down our intent. So that was a lot of words.
Thank you, Ms. Maple. Mr. Burgess, if you can hang on for just one second. We've got Mr. Doran, who's been hanging on for a minute. I'd like to get to him, then we'll come back to you. Mr. Doran?
I'm glad the topic has come up for our conversation. It's been one that's been on my tickler list for, you know, how do, how do we address this? And so here we are. I do very much appreciate that Dr. Minert, last spring, immediately acted in getting information out to our parents on how we handle things, and, and directions to building principals and others who might be impacted by it, how to handle a warrant, you know, very clear, you know, and having done, dealt with a lot of those types of things, particularly over custody issues, but I've also dealt with an international situation on it for a student, you know, I appreciated that as a principal, I could get legal advice right away, and through downtown, and to, directly to the lawyers, to review some documents. And I think the reiteration of that among the processes, in, in terms of particularly for students, immigrant students and staff. So that statement is really important. It needed to go out again beginning of this year, might need to go out multiple times during the year, because people do kind of forget, and they get caught up in, in things. Resolutions are extremely important, because they do give direction to Administration. If we're saying them, that's what we expect, follow up. I think it's also really important why, and I'm saying this, why I think it is important that we do something, is that as a Board, we can, we can affirm our support to our Administration on the processes that we have. And, and the, you know, when I look at our strategic plan, how do we really carry out that value of belonging, and this fits under that thing for me? The, so, so they're very, very important statements. I am glad to hear that our conversation, and it's what I anticipated was there before, that we don't want a political statement. This is not the place for us to make a political statement, but it is something to affirm how we stand with our families, how we do protect people, and also for our staff, because I know people who are afraid to say anything because they are on a green card. They are here legally. They, we have, we are recruiting, actively recruiting, and dependent on international teachers to come, legal status and, and such, but to make sure that they know they are safe here and accepting that and coming forward, and we will do what, and we appreciate their piece, their contributions. We do know that this is a big issue, partially because in our, across our country. We do know that this is a big issue, partially because in our, across our country, because people's legal statuses are being changed on a daily basis in some cases. They're here legally, they came legally, they are here legally, but that's changing for them and that creates some issues. So, I think it is important for us to take a stand, so we are also on record as fully supportive of the processes that we follow, that our administration has backed up with that and can act accordingly, and that we are clear to, to also acknowledge that what immigrants to our community contribute, how they enrich our experience. And I'm thinking broadly, we have military spouses, we have military children, we, we benefit from the experiences of people from around the world who have come here for, for a variety of reasons. I've talked to many over the years who have come out of countries where there was specific violence, specific threats against their family, and even if there wasn't a specific threat, the safety of their family was at stake, and they've chosen to come to our country, our community, and I think they need to know there is that support there. So, there are different aspects that I've looked at as well. I thought it was fascinating, and I started Googling these, and it's fascinating, the similarity of title, the similarity of some of the wherethes and resolutions, because it's broad, and so, but one of them I found was 2017, you know. And so, I mean, this has been around for several years, it's become somewhat heightened, even more so recently, there are court cases that are going on to enter this. And I'll save, most of my comments, I did want to say, you know, there are things that, why this is important, and we, we teach in our curriculum, I'm thinking here, civics, that people say, well, we don't teach civics, we do teach civics, and one of them is Constitution, one of them is founding, you know, in our social studies, the founding of our country. Many of our military leaders in the American Revolution were immigrants. They came not to stay here, but to help. So, I mean, the, this, it just has resonance throughout what we teach kids. So, as we go through, at first I was saying, went to a thing, well, should I rewrite? No. But there are some things that I think need to be adjusted, some deletions, some perhaps additions, and some reordering, but I think it's well-intentioned, I think it's appropriate for us to have this, but it does take this discussion and thoughtful consideration, because it does have an impact on many people's lives, and it's also something we would, I would hope would be something that would help to continue to bring our community together and not divide our community, so.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Thank you, Mr. Doran. Mr. Burgess?
Thank you. Yeah, and on the, you know, as far as the resolutions that exist elsewhere in the country, there's similar to this in other school districts, I, I used those as resources, we used those as resources when we were crafting this, several of them. And I would point out too, you know, going back to something Ms. Julian said, some of those have much stronger language than what we chose to put in here. Look at what the LA Unified School District put out, for example, and I'm frankly not opposed to that, but, but I do think that this, what we've crafted is, is very factually based. I, I appreciate Mr. Doran pointing out that resolutions do give some direction, and I guess to, to be clear, they don't create anything that the administration necessarily has to act on right away, so that's what I was coming, where I was coming from earlier, but it does, as Mr. Doran said, provide that support and the will of the board. I would be interested in, in hearing some specific suggestions for how to revise or reorder things from the board. I don't know if we want to do that revision today, or if we want to take ideas and, and then bring it back to, I could do more work individually if I get some ideas, or with Ms. Maple, and we can tailor something, just let me know the process that we want to follow here. But one thing, I, I really appreciated Mr. Doran's comment just now that we benefit from diversity, I learned that from Star Trek, but, but I, but I, I couldn't agree more, diversity makes us stronger, and so I, I'm wondering if there was a whereas that, if the board would be supportive of adding a whereas to that effect, or adding something in one of the existing wherethes, to, to highlight that we do believe that diversity is a strength of the district.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. So I'll throw myself in, then we'll go to Ms. Julian. I appreciate the extensive amount of work that went into this by both you, Mr. Burgess, and you, Ms. Maple. My only ask for this would be that, and I know you're going to hate this, I want to see it shortened, not to take context out, because I know that that would diminish things. I don't necessarily want context taken out, I would just like to see fewer wherethes. That would be my only suggestion, I don't know what that looks like and how we incorporate things, but I would like to try to make it a one to one and a half pager instead of almost two pages, just for reading consistency for people, for our, us. I don't, again, I don't know, I don't want to sound insensitive, that's not what my intention is. I would just like to somehow see if we could condense things somehow and move things together, maybe it is a reorganization and a relisting, sort of as Mr. Doran said, I'm not exactly sure how that looks. That is my only input. Ms. Julian?
Okay, I think I, I'm, I'm going to say this first, I absolutely would love to, like, say, yes, we support diversity in our, and diversity makes us stronger, and I believe that with all of my heart. With this resolution, so I feel like this conversation could like blossom into a million different, million different ways, like we could add support of our immigrant community, support of diversity. I want to focus this though, on when you, when you have a resolution, when you're making a stance, and, and to Ms. Maples and Ms., Mr. Burgess, both of you have said now, what is our intent, what is our stance? It, you know, it says in the beginning of this that we are standing, so we are making some sort of stance here, and that stance is that we, my stance, and, and when we draft a resolution, it becomes the resolution of the board, and then that does give administration a focus. But my intent here is that we really focus this on what we're trying to respond to, which is a, which is the fear that some of our families may have about what happens if I send my student to school. So, that is what I feel like we should be focusing on, is how to make people feel safer. And that's the main conversation that I feel like we had, that I had with the staff member who reached out. And again, I think it's really also important for everyone to articulate very clearly that we're talking about legal, legal status, a, a person with legal status who is here within the school district, just articulation wise, it can, it could get misinterpreted as, as different types of words. But when that staff member reached out, there was that fear of safe, of, am I safe? I am an, I am an immigrant, I am here legally, and am I safe? And I think that we're hearing that, a resounding fear throughout the country right now as, as ICE activity increases. Earlier this year, and I feel like that fear is rooted in a federal policy that was rescinded that removed sensitive locations from ICE list, and that was schools, churches and hospitals, those were removed, and that was a federal move that was removed to maintain those spaces. So then, of course, there's fear, and I feel like when we're, when we are making a stance, the stance that I want to make is that we have federal policies, we have school board policies, we have state policies, and your students are safe. And that's, I feel like, the purpose of what I go into this intent, that's the intent that I have in putting something together. And the resolutions that I've looked at, again, and I think, thanks to him, we probably looked at very similar resolutions, but the resolutions that I've looked at really had that as the focus. I mean, I think it would be wonderful to add all the other things about our immigrant community and how diversity makes us stronger, but right now, I feel like fam, how, how is that statement making people feel safer in this moment? And how is that statement making it, strengthening our policies? So, there's a couple things, the resolution is the first step, the second step would possibly be, can we as a board help the administration drafting a policy above that AR, which gives a little bit more legal teeth to the administrative regulation that's already there and refers back to FERPA, or ba- back to laws that guide students within our schools and families within our schools? But my, the focus that I hope that we can get to is really on that sense of safety for students and our families, and of course, our, our staff members too.
Thank you, Ms. Julian. We're going to go to Ms. Maple, and then I have Mr. Burgess.
I just want to clarify that the court case we cite and FERPA refer to protecting all students, so it's not, we're not just talking about folks that have concerns despite their legal status, we're talking about all students, regardless of status, because that's not information that the district even obtains. But I hear, it sounds like there's a lot of interest in adjusting, and I hear where everybody's coming from and where everybody is, I would really like to hear what the suggestions are for edits, so that we can get this to a place where we're ready to keep it going. So, I think that Ms. Julian and Mr. Doran both said that they had some specific edits, I'd really, I, I don't, I feel like a resolution, especially a work session for a resolution, is a time to wordsmith, as opposed to during a meeting, so I'm in, and I would love to hear suggestions, so that we can get this to something that is ready for a first reading with, with broad support from the board.
Thank you, Ms. Maple. I agree. With that, we will go to Mr. Burgess first, and then we'll kick things off with Mr. Doran.
Thank you. I'll, I'll make two comments, one to back up what, with what Ms. Maple said, I'm just going to go ahead and read that first whereas again. Whereas the US Supreme Court held in Plyler versus Doe, 1982, that under the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment, no public school district can deny children access to free public education based on their immigration status or the immigration status of their parents. What that means is it does not mean that we only protect those with legal status, or we only educate those with legal status. I want to emphasize here, no human is illegal, they may be undocumented, and there may be various reasons for that, that have nothing to do with whether they're a criminal or not. And we're also seeing legal status being revoked arbitrarily, as Mr. Doran pointed out earlier. So, we're not focused on protecting people with legal status, we're focused on carrying out the duties that we are supposed to carry out, which includes providing free education to any child, any student, period. As far as, you know, the question about how does discussing diversity make people feel safer, I think that people feel valued when we acknowledge them, when we tell them that we value them, and that helps people to feel safer. So I think that it's very, very much appropriate to add language to this that, that discusses the value of, of diversity. And with that, I will say, I also would appreciate some suggestions for edits, I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Mr. Doran?
Thank you. That's where I was going to go. So, just to start us out, I would reorder the first three wherethes, minimally, I would start, the second whereas should be the first one. That it's, it's very clear that, you know, every child has access, and that's where we're starting. I would make the suggestion that we remove the word should at the end of the second line, and that it would be the, the school district affirms its position, we're at this point of not saying we should do it, we're, we're doing it. So, I would make that suggestion there. In the, what's currently the third whereas, I would make that the second, and I'm going to stop with these three, okay, and then get back in the queue. I would take out in that per FNSBSD administrative reg, because that's less important as the state law, and we might want to reference what that is. I, I made the notation, is, are these correct quotes from our state law?
From the regulation.
It, okay, so if they're, thank you for that clarification. So I think that we should make it state law, and what is that state law, so that that's clear. So we're, we're staying within our state, we're following those things within our state that says that, and I would suggest in that whereas dropping the last phrase and does not have to permit access to individuals, we don't, we don't need that in there, that's one way of shortening things, and we're following a process. So, that last line could come off. And then, the reference to Plyler would be appropriate enough, it's the third one, because now we're expanding it out from our state law, how we act, and then to, and we're increasing from FERPA to federal law, and it's the interpretation of federal law. So, that's where my initial suggestions would be, covering those first three wherethes.
Thank you, Ms. Doran. Ms. Maple?
I don't have any, that reordering makes sense to me as well, and I, I know why we ordered it differently, and I, I see your logic. My only, my only thing I'm resisting there is the acknowledging the specific administrative regulation, I think the intent there, my intention in having, wanting to say per this specific one, was so that if somebody has to date been unaware that that exists, that in the, and for whatever reason, the board meeting where we're, where it's being read, or one of the conversations, if this is what is, what educates somebody about this protection, that I, I thought it important to say right there, like, we're referencing something that already exists in our AR, that... that I think citing it specifically gives this strength and tells a reader, or the public, that this isn't just a resolution saying that we hope this thing, it's a resolution, as you were saying, Mr. Dorn, that's affirming, I wrote it down when you said it, that we are supportive of the policies our district follows. And so I think referencing that is, has value. So, I'm interested if other, how anybody else feels, or if nobody has feelings, it's just me and Tim about it. I mean, Mr. Dorn.
Ms. Julian.
I think it's actually best to lead with the national, because that is, that right there is what I see in most of the other policies. I, you know, I see your logic there, Tim, in going from the local, you know, kind of the state level and local, and then the broader. But, you know, one that really rang true to me was this one right here, and I'm going to read, I'm just going to read a couple of the other ones that I liked, but really, when you start from that global level, when you start from that national level, I think that it's important that people understand that. And I almost like that, the positive versus where we say that no public school can deny, flipping that to, all children in the United States have the right to attend public school, and public school districts have the obligation to enroll students regardless of their actual or perceived race, color, national origin, citizenship, immigration status, or the status of their parents slash guardians. I like something that is a little bit broader and more focused on what people's rights are versus that we cannot deny, if that makes any sense. Because what we're doing is we're giving people information.
Thank you, Ms. Julian. Mr. Dorn.
Okay. To Ms. Maple's comment, I appreciate the understanding of why you want to put the AR in, and I'm not against that, and I understand the potential reference there. I do think maybe we should do the state law reference as well. You know, so, because that's what somebody might ask. Okay, wait a minute. Why I was starting with the state is because that's what we're, in some ways, most governed by, but I do like, if we, wherever we do with the whereas statement on Plyler and versus Doe, really, the important thing there is that that is law, equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment is the primary law. The interpretation that was done on Plyler was really, that said, that, and I appreciate the observation on the negative, because I often want to look for that, but in that particular decision, in reading it, it said that you may not deny, that no district can do that. And so, that may be something to consider in relooking at that actually decision, whether this wording emphasizes what that is importantly.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Ms. Julian.
Okay, thank you. It's brought up, been brought up a couple of times, that we're talking about all students. We're talking about regardless of, regardless of immigration status, regardless of that, we're talking about all students. Several of the other policy resolutions that I found did not isolate one community in the title. And so, if we're talking about all students, and we're hearing from families, regardless of its immigration status, that there's a concern about their safety, I think that broadening it to something like, and I don't know if this would qualify under the watering it down, but I think that we'd need to broaden it a little bit more than what the title is right now. And so, one of the things that I had thought was we could rename this Safe Spaces, Strong Futures, and then the colon, reaffirming a commitment to an environment of safety and belonging for all students. Because, for me, like what Mr. Dorn said, then what we're trying to do is state the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment. That, to me, is the primary that we are affirming, which encompasses all.
Thank you, Ms. Julian. Mr. Dorn, if you could hang on for just a second, I'd like to throw a couple at you, if you don't mind. Just in reading it, so I have no edits, this is just to my clarification of wanting to maybe make it shorter. I was looking at paragraph six and seven whereases, and wondering if those could not be condensed somehow, or taken out. And again, I'm not trying to diminish anything, I just think that if we went from the whereas the FNSBSD is a district with a large immigrant refugee and foreign-born population, including mixed-status families, and then we jump to whereas FNSBSD embraces our responsibility to welcome and educate all students, I'm just curious if there was a, what the emphasis was on those two whereases, if it would be a problem to remove them, or maybe how we could condense those. Mr. Burgess.
I can address that. I'd also like to circle back and address a couple other things at some point. I think those two are important, because it kind of helps to set the stage for what our district really looks like, and that we do, in fact, have people here that are potentially going to be targeted by this, by these actions. So I think those are important, and along those same lines, I do think that we should highlight the communities that are being targeted, not expand it to all people. I mean, I'm comfortable saying Black Lives Matter when Black lives are the ones being targeted. I'm comfortable saying immigrants when immigrants are the people being targeted. These are the people who need our support right now. These are the people who are under fire. I don't think it's, I don't think we need to, I do think it waters it down. I'll just say that. We are putting this out to specifically address specific actions that are occurring that are unethical, immoral, illegal, in many cases, and we have responsibilities here to protect our own students and our own staff, and there are specific people being targeted that I think we can highlight here, and we should highlight. And I think, you know, that's part of the reason that those two whereases, I think, are important. I don't know if others want to chime in there.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Well, specifically about those two, the two paragraphs, six and seven, it's, it might be appropriate at this moment, but those numbers will change. And so, it seems like those are moving targets, kind of, those are things that aren't going to remain stagnant. So I would support either removing them or consolidating that in order to not have the specific numbers. I understand what you're trying to do, but I don't think the point is to try to prove to anybody that we're a diverse community. I don't think we need to prove that we're a diverse community, in my opinion. I think everybody sort of knows that already. I don't think that this document should be trying to prove it. I'm with Ms. Julian in the fact that I want to see the focus of this be more in line with a safer environment, and assuring people that while their children are at school, or while employees are at their jobs in the school, that they will be safe, because we do have policies in place, we do have procedures that have already been outlined, and we will follow those policies and procedures. And just to note, off the school, we can't protect people who are here illegally when they go home. I'm just going to say that, because sort of the elephant in the room, like, it seems to me, like, if you're here illegally, that's the first mistake right there. Like, people are not following rules. I get that, and I get it, Bobby, Mr. Burgess, but that might be the elephant in the room that people don't want to talk about. There is a procedure for immigration. I personally filled out immigration paperwork 25 years ago to move to Australia. And I mean, so, I get it. I was trying to move, and there was a five-year waiting list, and I could not stay in the country more than six months. I had to leave the country every six months. So there's rules in place, and there's things you have to do. I did not, I'm here. I did not end up doing that, but I have firsthand knowledge of attempting to do that. So, but I was also following all of the rules. I understand there's things going on in the world right now, but I just want to say that. I appreciate the overall idea of this, and I do want to see it consolidated drastically. And I'll, you use the words unethical, and moral, and illegal. We have a country, and we have laws, and we have borders, and we have rules, and I'm not against any immigrant. I'm only a second-generation-born United States citizen. My mother was born here, my grandfather came from Russia. He came in 1915. He entered the war. He fought in World War I, and when he came back, he was a naturalized citizen because he served in the Army. He's buried on Birch Hill, and he has a lovely veteran big stone up there for his, on his grave, but he served this country, and he came here as an immigrant. So I am the granddaughter of a first, you know, of an immigrant. So, I'm not that far, just because I'm not a person of next color, it doesn't mean that I don't understand. So I'll leave it at that for right now.
Ms. Maple, I saw your hand up. Did you still have a comment?
I was going to suggest that to, that the, the point about the stats in here being a moving target, that I think that there's an easy solution there to do some wordsmithing that I'm sure that Bobby and I could do ahead of a first reading, that still clearly denotes these populations that we want to make clear exist without holding our, you know, without there being super-specific stats. So I am confident that that's a reasonable change that can make it stand over time, without removing the fact that we want to acknowledge that we have a large population of multilingual learners, that we want to acknowledge that we have those in moderate status that have, we want to acknowledge that we have so many languages spoken, and that we have a very diverse population. I do think those are important things to note, but I do see how we could make that one whereas, without losing any of those pieces of information. So I'm happy to work on that. I will leave it there and focus on any other suggested edits to the resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Maple, and I appreciate the explanation on those two paragraphs. Thank you for that. That's why I wanted to ask about it. Mr. Dorn, and then we'll go to you, Mr. Burgess.
I want to say that I like the focus on immigrant in this, immigration, that's the issue, and we do have a number of resolutions that recognize different groupings within our community and within our schools, and I think that's what this is really addressing, and a situation that addresses those. With asking for some of the feedback on further whereases, whereas four, I would suggest deleting it, that we don't ask, but even if we asked, if even if we had that information, the same premises follow, and we don't give out that information, and et cetera. So, I think that could be deleted. The, okay, that whereas four should be deleted, because even if we knew this, the answer, we don't inquire about it, it's not on our things now, but even if we did, the premises would all stay the same. The, I think five and six could be combined. And in six, I would have perhaps otherwise said, well, we don't need number in terms of multilingual, because that is not necessarily reflective of immigrant or not, but because right now, also, that's a target grouping, I would say that those could be combined, and I would take out those who are exited. It just becomes a distractor, so we can talk about how we combine those. And then, I'll stop with seven. I would suggest deleting seven, because there is, there are those who are, the groupings mentioned do not imply, should not imply, those are the immigrants and others who are not included. I'm particularly thinking, we don't mention white, for instance, and we have those who identify as white, who are, would be also impacted by this. And the thing is that that breakdown doesn't really add to it, it kind of, the intent, I think, of standing with our immigration community in this case. So I would delete whereas seven.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Ms. Maple.
Hearing that feedback, my suggestion is, which it does shorten, okay, is whereas the FNSBSD is a district with a diverse and large immigrant refugee and foreign-born population, including mixed-status families, so touching on the one that you suggested we remove, Mr. Dorn, that was to acknowledge the diversity, which, and also, as Ms. Carol Hubbard said, you know, that it would seem that we can, okay. Whereas the FNSBSD is a district with a diverse and large immigrant refugee and foreign-born population, including mixed-status families, and whereas the FNSBSD student body includes many multilingual learners, and at least 68 languages are spoken by students in FNSBSD. That one, I know it's, we're sticking with a hard number, but we know that the number is larger than 68, so it feels like a pretty safe one to go with, because it's not going to get smaller, it's only going to get bigger. So I think that condenses.
Yeah.
That does some condensing.
Yeah.
That's my suggestion. And I wrote it in a separate draft that Mr. Burgess and I can come back to it.
Thank you, Ms. Maple. Much appreciated. I just realized I skipped over Ms. Julian, so we're going to go Ms. Julian, and then Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. So, to Mr. Dorn's point about striking paragraph number four, which is whereas FNSBSD employees, contractors, volunteers, and representatives do not inquire about a student's, parent's, or guardian's immigration status, I think that is important to leave in, however, it's really a legal one, and when I look at what other school districts are doing, like specifically in the states, so the Anchorage School District has, again, not a resolution, but it has information for immigrant families right on their main page. It's called Hot Topics, and it's in eight different languages. There's three- There's three questions. And so, those three questions that are FAQs on that site lead me to think that's what we should be addressing, that's what we should be honing in on, and it's really honed in on the safety, the safety of students in the building. And right in there, the first question is, would ASD, Anchorage School District, ever share a student's immigration status with federal immigration officials? And the answer is no, ASD does not collect student immigration status information. And so, I think that we should change that, not strike it, but potentially change the words does not, do not inquire, to does not collect, and then wordsmith it, so that that works within the, within that sentence. But I do think that one's important to leave in.
Thank you, Ms. Dullian. Mr. Burgess?
Thank you. I just, this isn't entirely relevant to the, to the resolution, but something was said earlier that I think I need to address. I don't want to leave it out there without addressing, you know, Ms. Carol Hubbard stated that people are being deported because they aren't here legally and they're not following the rules. And I just wanted to make a note that I recognize that there are many people here who have undocumented status for no fault of their own. They may have tried to follow rules, they may be waiting on their day in court. And in fact, we're seeing people being pulled from courts when they show up for those appointments to obtain legal status. We have a member of our own community, Atri Pontau, who was taken from her vehicle driving down College Road, she was pulled over, taken, and shipped off to a detention facility out of state. This is someone who was here since she was a child. She was eleven when she, when she first came here, I believe. She's had children here, she's been, she's, her family owns a restaurant in town. She's a valued member of this community who was abducted because she doesn't have legal status despite having been here for over thirty years. Okay, so, now, may, might there have been steps that she could have taken to obtain legal status? I don't know. I don't know her whole story. But that is one example of someone who's been here a long time, still undocumented. Does that mean that they deserve to be ripped away from their home and their family and their community? I don't think it does. Now, yeah, it's correct that we can't protect people outside of schools. This resolution doesn't go there. This resolution talks about what we do in our schools. So, I just wanted to address that. I will say I do support consolidating some of these, and I would agree that Ms. Maple and I can work on that in between this work session and when we bring this to regular agenda. I do think it's important to highlight that we do not inquire about an individual's immigration status. That one maybe could be combined into another whereas, but I do think it's important to leave it there. The other option that I had already been considering for that one is instead of a whereas, some of the other districts' resolutions that I've looked at have something like that in their resolved language. And it would be somewhat redundant to put it in resolved, because it's what we already do, but I think that it might, it might be appropriate to really just show people strongly, since we are making a statement to help people feel safer, that, you know, we do not, we will not, and we can't, we can't even provide immigration status information to the federal government, because we simply do not have it. So, and I think it's important for people to understand that. So, I think that that one, we could potentially combine it with another whereas, or I would actually prefer to move it into a resolved. But I'll put that back to the board for discussion. I do want to say with, on clause seven, where we break down the diversity of the district based on numbers that are available to us, or information that's available to us. I think that is important to have those numbers there, or at least to describe that. I'm not trying to prove anything by that, just describe. We could add a year, you know, in, you know, as of 2025, 2016 school year, this is the composition. And then if we update the resolution in the future, of course, update that year and those numbers. But I think that it is appropriate to highlight. I understand the argument that, yes, there are people who are not people of color, who are immigrants, and just because you're a person of color doesn't mean you're an immigrant. But what we're seeing around the country is people being targeted for their skin color, for having an accent, for speaking a different language. And we have, that has included Native Americans, who I think their immigration status is unquestionable. They are legal. But I think it is, so I think it's appropriate to highlight that we have all these different groups here that could be targeted, whether or not they're actually immigrants. That's, that's the logic, part of the logic of putting that in there, and why I'd like to keep it.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. I would like to remind the board to let's please be mindful of what we are speaking of, the subject matter in which we are speaking. This is a very delicate topic. There have been a couple comments now that could be taken out of context, and I just really want to prevent us from doing such a thing, especially when speaking about people, as this is what we are referencing, people here in our district. So, I just want to put that reminder out there to let's please be mindful of how we're approaching this subject with that. Ms. Dullian, I saw your hand.
Okay, thank you. And this was actually perfect, Mr. Burgess, because what you just said is exactly to the point that I'm trying to make, which is that this is bigger than just focusing on immigrants. This is a group of people who feel scared because they have an accent, or because they look a certain way, or because they live in a certain area, or because they have parents that work in a certain, within a certain field, or family members. So, when I'm looking at resolutions from different school districts that are in really big hotbeds of ICE activity, and I'm looking at the American Southwest, what struck me is that a lot of those school districts that are also in very, I'm going to call it very neutral places, not neutral, not necessarily left-leaning or right-leaning communities, and I think it's very, very similar to kind of Fairbanks. What I see a lot of those resolutions focusing on is the safety and belonging of all students. Of course, within the resolutions, the resolutions specifically talks about FERPA, federal law, state laws, what can and can't happen if federal immigration law enforcement activities are around or on school district property. But it really, but it, but it doesn't, but the way in which it's worded is about all children in the United States having the right to attend public school, and public school districts have that obligation, regardless of their, and then it goes into the actual or perceived race, color, national origin, citizenship, immigration status, or the, or the status of their parents and guardians. And of course, those resolutions are absolutely, and they, and they point to ICE, and they point to what happens, and it includes everything that we have here. But what I'm seeing here is, is we start with immigrants only, we're standing with our immigrant school community, but then we kind of go over here to all people, because there's more than just people. And this was speaking to folks within our own district who are immigrants, who are here, who are working, that feel like they're being targeted. And I agree that there's reason for them to feel targeted right now with increased activity. So, what we're trying to do with this resolution is let them know that all students have the right to this public education, and this is what will happen, and this is what our laws say if and when immigration officers come to school. And that's where I'd like us to kind of hone this in around, again, the safety of all students. And we specifically talk about it here, which is why we talk about diversity, because it is important that we recognize that it's not just people from immigrant families who are feeling, who are feeling scared right now. And I did a lot of work reaching out to people in different communities around our community that are a part of different immigrant communities, or a part of the Alaska Native Community, to see, is this, does this resolution speak to you? Is this something that is, that is speaking to you as a community? And I think it is important that we broaden the title, and we broaden when we talk about it from the get-go, because we do inevitably in that section number three, I'm sorry, in six and seven, anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Dullian. Mr. Dorn?
Thank you. I appreciate the conversation and perspectives being shared, because going back to the fourth whereas that I was suggesting to delete, I'd be comfortable leaving it, because it is assurance as part of that piece to families to know. My suggest, adjusting it slightly at the end does not collect or inquire about, because I think that does both things. We simply don't have that information, and it's also reflective of, we don't inquire about it, so if we don't know, we don't know. I mean, and even if somebody shares it with us, that's not part of our collection or inquiry, so we don't do it. I appreciate the comments, and again, kind of bringing that diversity. I think it is real important, the suggestion, to bring diversity into that combined five, six, maybe five, six, seven is really what we're combining. And I think that we're a diverse district ethnically and culturally, with a large immigrant, you know, thing. We are diverse, recognizing that, not weathering it down. I do, you know, I understand because of the profiling that we know is happening, has happened, and is well-documented across the country, that seven is kind of addressing that, but I think if we bring it into the diversity piece broadly, and I would still delete seven. In terms of the eighth whereas, I really liked it, and I would put that as the last one before they suggest that we consider that, as the last one before the resolves. I would delete the last phrasing about that, and will not be impeded or intimidated with exercising that responsibility. We already talked about that we embrace the responsibility, and I think that distracts from the, actually, the strength of the rest of the wording within that whereas, so I put that out there for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. So, I just want board members to be mindful of the time. It is currently 7:50. I would like us to be done at 8:30. So, there's a whole backside of this we haven't even discussed yet. Ms. Maple?
Well, let me jump to that.
Thank you, Ms. Maple.
I was, as I was reading back through this and focusing on trying to condense, there's a couple that I would suggest combining. So, one of those is combining, whereas the federal administration has been inconsistent in honoring immigration status with one that we talked about earlier, which is whereas actions taken by the federal administration involving deportation, okay, those are the two. What I changed that to, I took it to combine them, is whereas the federal administration has been inconsistent in honoring immigration status and work visas, and actions by the federal administration involving the deportation of both documented and undocumented people have been found by federal courts to be illegal and have caused fear and distrust of government agencies amongst people of color, regardless of immigration status. So, that eliminates one of the wherethes by combining those two. That's number one. And number two, and then I'll stop, is combining number thirteen, I know they're not numbered, but I, maybe you guys all numbered them like I did, which is whereas numerous students whose education, safety, emotional well-being, and family relationships are at risk of their immigration status are, and will be in the future, be enrolled in FNSBSD schools. And I added number seventeen to the end of that one. Educational personnel play a vital role as trusted sources of information and resources, fostering students' emotional and physical well-being, because we're talking about their safety, emotional well-being, and also acknowledging that it's the educational personnel that are playing this vital role. This is why we're talking about this all at the same time. So, that consolidates two more without removing the intent, or without getting rid of that intent of either of those. Yeah, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Ms. Maple. Mr. Dorn?
I think it's closely related. I would suggest nine, ten, and eleven be deleted. The reason is that, well, ten and eleven, as well as fifteen and sixteen, especially fifteen, are judgments about the actions, and I think they detract from the strength of our support for our families, students, and employees. The, and those, especially like number nine, that memo, there are legal cases that are ongoing, that are already being addressed, and there are judgments out there. So, I would steer clear of our stating, I mean, I know we each have individual feelings, but I would steer clear of our resolution passing a judgment on those actions. We know what we control, and so, that in part addresses some of the pieces that Ms. Maple introduced in trying to move us forward. I think that would, we can be more concise and address, keep the focus on what we're, is in our control, not judgment. If it doesn't meet our understanding of the law and procedures for kids, we're going to, we're going to do that, but this isn't where we're making those judgments out.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Ms. Dullian, and then we'll go to Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. I want to speak to Mr. Dorn's point about number eight, ending it at the word "community", which is in the last line. I think that's one of the strongest things that we have in this. I think that's one of the strongest statements, and I'd like to see that emphasized, which, and I'll read it for the record, whereas FNSBSD embraces our responsibility to welcome and educate all students regardless of their immigration status, and then you would add the word "and" celebrates And then you would add the word "and" celebrates their contribution to our diverse learning community. That is a very strong statement, so thank you for adding that in. And I would add the period after "community." To Mr. Doran's point about nine, 10, 11, and if I was, you wanted to strike 12 as well, did you mention that, Mr. Doran?
No. Let me see which one that is, 15 and 16?
11, I think, is important to include because, but, it can be strengthened. We, so I'm not going to wordsmith this right now, but I think that it's important to state that we have an obligation to provide education to all students. And when that, when we are being, when that is being disrupted, we aren't able to meet our federal obligation. Right now, how this is written, we refer back to, like, for example, in number 11, we refer back, we refer, we refer back to our district's mission. But if we want to strengthen it, I think that we should refer back to our federal obligation to provide education to all students regardless of. That, I think, strengthens that statement and also ties it back to what I think that this is, when I, what I, again, keep pointing to, which is our obligation, our duty under the Constitution to provide that education. It's not just because it's our mission, it's because it is what we, what we are legally obliged to do, and what we should be doing. So I'd, I'd hope that we could, instead of in 11, with the, where we, where we refer back to impeding our mission, it would be impeding our federal obligations. And I've seen, I've seen that in several different policies, and I think that the way that it's worded other places is perhaps a little bit better.
Thank you, Ms. Julian. Mr. Burgess?
I'm going to have to disagree with Mr. Doran, and with some of what Ms. Julian said as well. I think that, I do not think that clauses nine, 10, and 11, or 15 and 16 are judgments. I think those are factual statements. The, number nine speaks to a memo that was rescinded, that was called the Protected Areas Enforcement Policy. The resc, the, the rescinding of that memo allows ICE to come into schools. It is very much relevant to this, and it is factual, and it is causing concern. If the causing concern is, is the judgment, I'm not, I think that's a factual statement. I think concern is evident around the country, and, and including here. Fact that someone called or spoke with multiple board members asking us for this resolution shows that, right there, there is concern. Similarly, number 10, this is a factual statement. The federal administration, actions by the federal administration involving the deportation of both documented and undocumented people have been found by federal courts to be illegal and have caused fear and distrust of government agencies amongst people of color regardless of immigration status. I think that's pretty factual. I recognize there's people's emotions in there, but it's true, and we've heard it, and we've seen it. The next one is also a factual statement. Federal immigration enforcement activities on or near district property or transportation routes disrupt the learning environment for all students regardless of immigration status. And it explains why, I, you know, by under, by discouraging attendance, participation, and family engagement, which undermines our mission. We can read it right over there under belonging. We commit to a safe and welcoming environment where each individual feels accepted, valued, respected, and integral to the school community. That's part of our mission. Community. We establish strong and meaningful connections where students, families, and staff support each other's growth and success. That's part of our mission. It's part of our strategic plan. I don't see anything in any of those statements as, as being judgments. These are factual statements. They refer to our rights and response, they refer to our responsibilities, they refer to people's, people's feelings, the way that, the, the environment that these actions by the federal government is creating, and the difficulties that we have because of it, or we might encounter. 15 and 16. 15 simply says the federal administration has been inconsistent in honoring immigration status and work visas. That is true. That is a factual statement. We talked about it multiple times tonight. 16, no federal or state law obligates a public school district to devote any resources, financial or otherwise, to the enforcement of federal immigration laws. I don't see a judgment in that either. That, that is a factual statement. We are not obligated to devote our resources to assisting in the enforcement of immigration laws. I think it's relevant. So, yeah, that's, I, I would like to keep all of those. I think that removing any of them significantly weakens this. I don't think it strengthens it. And then to the point of moving eight to the end, I would support that. I would not support striking, impeded, or intimidating, will not be impeded or intimidated from exercising that responsibility. I understand the argument that that might distract from the statement that we welcome and educate all students regardless of their immigration status, but I think that it is important to note that we recognize that we have this responsibility, and we will uphold it regardless of attempts to impede or intimidate.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. We have Ms. Carol Hubbard, then Ms. Julian, then Mr. Doran.
Thank you. I just wanted to state that I am in agreement with Mr. Doran to remove nine, 10, and 11, also 15 and 16, and number seven, and the second half of paragraph eight. I, I really think that this needs to be shortened, it just needs to be consolidated drastically. A lot of this stuff doesn't have, our obligation is to provide education, and I, I totally agree with that, and I'd like to see this stay focused on students, stay focused on, on their safety. And some of this stuff is national, and some of this is, is grandstanding, in my opinion. And it's sort of a political, I, I just want to see us focus on the students of our district, and keeping them safe, and assuring them and our staff that people here are safe when they are in school and when they are working.
Ms. Julian?
Okay, I'm going to speak to number 10. I'm sorry, not number 10, number 11, which is, starts whereas federal immigration enforcement activities such as surveillance, questioning, information requests, arrests, or detention on or near district property or transportation routes disrupt the learning environment for all students regardless of the immigration status by incurred, discouraging attendance, participation, and family engagement, thereby undermining the district's mission to provide supportive learning environments where all students thrive and hindering their access to free and public K-12 education. I think that's good. My only request is that we then also broaden it out with our legal duties to provide education, period. Because when I'm looking at other districts that have resolutions like this, a lot of them refer back to our duty to provide all students regardless of immigration status access to free public K-12 education. So I think that's our primary duty here, in that any type of, we're just recognizing as a school board that activity like this will hinder not only the person that's being targeted, but, for example, the entire school activity that's happening. And, and so I do think it's important that we have it in there, especially because it says disrupting, and, and disruptions impact everybody. And, and you do say that, and I do want to recognize that you put in there all students. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Julian. I'm going to go to Mr. Doran, then we'll go to Ms. Maple, but then I feel like we're kind of getting into circles, and also we're getting into grandstanding comments of our own. And I think that we are at a place where we could confidently send this back to Ms. Maple and Ms., Mr. Burgess, and have them sit with Dr. Minor and do some edits, and then we could bring this forward at our agenda next week. That would be what I would like to do. I, I don't want this board to cross any lines and get themselves into any more gray areas of admonishing anyone, which is, we've came very close to tonight, and so I just kind of want to control that stance and keep us on topic here. So we're going to go to Mr. Doran, we'll go to Ms. Maple, and then we're going to kick this back to them for edits. So, Mr. Doran?
Okay, thank you. I will say that I hope we will finish, not going back over things, but finish our comments through the end. There's not very much left, but, so that Ms. Maple and Mr. Burgess has all our input. Just going through here with number eight, I, I really do think we might be impeded, we might be intimidated, and that's also part of why I would drop that last line. But I think it's a great introduction to the, to the resolves. Appreciate the, the clarifications and additional information on several of the whereses that I was suggesting be considered for deletion. Number 11, or the whereas 11, hearing things and thinking about it, it is inappropriate, that, that is not a judgment, and it is an impact, and it's one of the things that we already have in play in terms of law enforcement activities. We have guidelines for that, so they would not be disruptive. And the one thing that I would suggest is, and I can share this afterwards with the draft, drafters of the resolution, the Salt Lake City one has a nice comment about things to occur at our schools, on our transportation routes, on our district property, or during other school activities, which helps to address if kids are on field trips and those types of things. And I've seen other delineations of that in other, so I'm no longer advocating deleting 11. Perhaps a slight rewording of that. The, I, I do feel pretty strongly about 15. I, in, in 10, let me go back to 10 for a second. Part of my issue with that is federal courts, some federal court decisions have found the administrative actions illegal, some have not, or some have not yet been decided. And so that's a piece I'm concerned about, again, looking at accuracy of what we're saying, and, and maybe that could be just reworded slightly. The, I've already said my piece on 15 and 16. In 17, the suggestion was maybe combining that with 13. I would put out consideration of keeping 17, but perhaps adding a little bit to it in recognizing that, that it may fit perfectly here to add in that educational personnel includes, you know, immigrants and, and international teachers, et cetera, so, but that might be a way of recognizing what our staff does broadly, as well as specifically, and I think that can be done there. And I will get back in the queue and save my comments for the 18 and the resolves.
Mr. Doran, if you have comments about the resolves, if you, if you could do it now?
Okay. So 18, and, and also the nature of how this was presented, which I believe is well stated in terms of standing and affirming where we stand, is that in the second line, whereas it says that the district takes action to assure, I would say that the district stands firm in assuring all students and families. What I am concerned about is the rest of it, and I would reword that, that we, but we are really standing firmly with them, and we want to protect them, and we want to make sure, we want to make sure that they're protected and handled appropriately, and issues are handled appropriately. I made the notation that perhaps really looking at the superintendent's letter and, and making that part of a statement that comes into here. The resolves, they're, they're, well, the, the last resolve, I would delete. It's, it's not necessary, and certainly in this district, and we can, we already have a process of getting resolutions after the schools. I assume it's similar that, you know, as a principal, whatever resolution came, we posted it, that was the expectation, that's, you know, so I think we already do that, and we can just make that clear. I think the administration would understand that, that's the expectation, get it out, make it known, and, you know, the translations, et cetera, we, we try to do. And if, if we haven't on this particular one, we can make sure that it's done, so. The, in the resolve, go to the second resolve, in third line, it talks about non-emergency federal law enforcement. I made a notation, maybe it's understood, but maybe we need to say it, state and local, because we, whether it's federal, state, or local, we follow the same procedures. And because there are efforts to sometimes involve state laws, involve local enforcement, I think it would be the same thing. We, we treat all of them in the same way. And similarly, in the first resolve, for, fourth line, or other federal agencies, I would say other federal, state, or local agencies that would disrupt the educational process. So as things develop, and that, that covers us.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Ms. Julian or Ms. Carol Hubbard, would you have any final edits to go in on this back page, even with the further resolves, before we go to Ms. Maple?
Yeah, I do. I think I think that there can be, I think that there is some redundancy in some of the wherestas and also in the resolved. We, I just want to go back to earlier in this discussion, we talked about number four potentially becoming a resolve. So, my recommendation, sorry, we just had a technical error for those that are watching, just a blip. And that's okay, because blips happen. Number four, we talked about resolve, turning that potentially into a resolve. I don't think we should, because I think it's redundant, because if we turn it into a resolve, we know that what we're doing is we're just reinstating, or we're just stating that as like an affirmative again. But what I don't want is, you know, these things last forever, for somebody to go back in history and look and say, oh, did they not already collect information on immigration stat...I mean, that's a legal thing. So, I think that we should not include it as a resolve. I think that it should be included as a whereas and stay where it is. Anyway, okay, and thank you so much for the technology moment of brevity. That was pretty funny. Okay, so, what I want to say about this resolution, and also, I'm glad that we're doing this in a work session, and I know that there is a sense of, are we watering it down? I hear what Mr. Doran is saying and with what Mrs. Carol Hubbard is saying about not having any emotion attached to this and really focusing on the facts. Where we started, and it's important, I do think that number nine is important to me, that one really is talking about the memo that happened on January 20th of this year that rescinded the protected areas of enforcement, that specifically talk about schools. And so, that's important, because that, to me, was the reason as to why there is more activity, and also the reason as to why we should, is that the right number, number nine? Yeah. The reason as to why we would have a resolution. And I do think that's important to have number nine there, because that really was an act that then said ICE could go into a school or a playground, and that is why a school board might decide to move forward with the resolution, even though to Mr. Doran's point, there's been resolutions that we can find going back to at least 2017. But that specifically, in my mind, is the action as to why we would respond. Then, but I do think that, I'm going to challenge and say that I do think that there are statements in here that, of course, it's concerning. However, we represent an entire community, and not everyone in the community is concerned. And I'm not saying that that's good or bad, I'm just saying that that's, that we, when we put together this resolution, it is a resolution of the board and of the community that we represent. So, to the extent that we can remove any, that we really just focus on facts, I don't think that that waters it down. I think that that strengthens it, because it is a fact that immigration status could be inconsistently honored, and we've seen that, and you referenced that. So, I would, in general, recommend that when this is reworked, whenever there's a statement where we might say, are we putting an emotion or reaction or an assumption on anybody who might be going through this, other than the safety and security of our students and staff and families, I just would ask that there's a pause, and let's actually consider that, let's think about that. Could that be interpreted as a value statement? Mr. Doran, were you suggesting that we strike that the, that the final resolution about communicating the challenge, communicating through different languages? If I can.
If I may answer.
Mr. Doran, you may answer.
Yes, I'm saying let's strike that. It's not necessary to the resolution itself, but that can easily be conveyed to the administration. We already distribute the resolution broadly. We can say we want it in different languages, especially because this does impact those, but we can give that guidance, that direction, without having it as part of the resolution, because it's pretty much our practice, anyway.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Doran.
Yeah, I support that, and I think that a lot of these resolutions that I've seen are distributed in many languages off the get-go, so I would just hope that we do the same thing. And I think more importantly, what I want to talk about is that we're going to make a resolution, and resolutions are important, because they state the will of the board, and they state that we are directing the administration, and they state that. But what I really want to focus on is what we have in place to the administration. Do you feel like our staff has the training and confidence that would they know the laws that are surrounding everything that we're talking about in this resolution, that they feel supported? Where are the gaps in supporting our staff and also our families? Because we could, we can spend, obviously, hours talking about a resolution, but when the rubber meets the road in our actual schools, do our principals, our teachers, our support staff, our custodians, our bus drivers, apologies if I'm leading other people out, administrators, do they feel supported in understanding their legal rights and protections under the law?
I would say yes, and probably more so now than maybe ever before, but many of our, I guess, not many, all of our staff members have to go through FERPA training, which applies to a lot of what we're talking about within this resolution and what is in administrative regulation. We also had specific training for our principals and front office staff specifically, because a lot of times they're going to be the ones handling law enforcement, coming to the school, and working with our school communities. And so, I do feel like, you know, they've been supported in the past, and a past resolution would probably help continue to support their actions in supporting our immigrant students.
Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Thank you. I feel very similarly to Ms. Doolian, and I thank you for expressing what the staff already knows. I would, I do support this document. I think it addresses something that's very valuable right now. It's very relevant, and I would like to, as you guys go back through this, to really focus on school safety, and then if we could incorporate more of what the actions that we will take, instead of broad statements of all means available, or, you know, these bigger ideas, maybe we could, you know, we could resolve that, you know, we will follow our policy, which is to X, Y, and Z, whatever it is. And that way, there is more information in this to provide more security and more confidence to the reader, okay, if this happens, this is what they're going to do, and I get that, and then I, and then I'm not nervous. So, maybe, and maybe that's just an approach that could happen in the rewrite. But thank you for working so hard on it. I know you did, and I know your heart's in this, and thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard. So, we are getting close to being done. We're getting close to 8:30. So, with that, we had Ms. Maple, and then we have Mr. Burgess, and then any further comments or questions that you have on this resolution, please submit them over to Mr. Burgess and Ms. Maple. Ms. Maple, go ahead.
I've taken a copious amount of notes. My two-page document is now five pages. I am very confident in our ability to take all of the feedback that we've received, synthesize it, and return for a first reading, something that we can continue to get to what we want, but that we'll have less feedback on, and...
Just procedural point, we only usually do one reading for resolutions.
Oh, yeah. So, it'll come forward next Tuesday. So, if, my suggestion would be, we kick this back to both of you. I would like it if you got with Dr. Minert and helped with this edit and rewrite. We would like to have this by Wednesday evening, so that it may be scheduled properly for the agenda and noticed properly, so that Mrs. Richardson can get it in the paper and all that, that goes along with our agenda setting. So, if we could have this done and back to Dr. Minert, myself, by Wednesday evening, that would be great.
So, what I meant to say, I took copious amounts of notes for me and Mr. Burgess and Dr. Minert to have an updated resolution ready by Wednesday evening, so that it can be properly noticed and be on our agenda for a reading, not the first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Maple. Much appreciated. Mr. Burgess.
And to Ms. Carol Hubbard's point about including more actions, I did actually have a couple, a couple items that could be included in our resolved section if the board supports it. It might seem a little redundant, but that's, I think that's actually okay. One of them was to resolve, it's really reiterating the whereas number four. So, we can, as far as I'm concerned, keep it in both places, but we could say, be it further resolved, no district employee shall allow access to or provide records or private information about any student, family, employee, by any non-emergency law enforcement, et cetera, et cetera, unless, and then kind of restates what's in the, I'll just read the whole thing. Be it further resolved, no district employee shall allow access to or provide records or private information about any student, family, or employee, or by any non-emergency law enforcement, including but not limited to ICE, unless presented with a legal and valid warrant, and the superintendent or assistant superintendent has granted approval in accordance with administrative regulation 1410. So, that is a specific action, and I think I actually should rephrase it to say, continue to, you know, we will continue to not allow access, or something along those lines. So, it's, again, affirming actions that we already have in place. The other idea that I had, that I'm not sure if it's as logistically feasible, but was to incorporate a communication plan, or incorporate notification of ICE activity or immigration enforcement activity into the district's emergency communication plan. Those were the two items that I already had as possible amendments here, so thank you for giving me the opportunity to bring those up. Yeah, I'll end there.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. So, we are wrapping up our meeting, as I have stated, Ms. Doolian and Mr. Doran. I will give you one more opportunity for a question, but it is 8:30, and I would like to get admin and everybody out here. So, Mr. Doran, if you could make it short and sweet, please.
And if you, sorry, if I can interject, just if you can just include feedback on what I just said.
Procedurally, this will come as a board action, not under consent agenda, because it's a brand new.
Yes, Mr. Doran, this is coming as a vote, yes.
Right. It's a brand new. I would be very open to saying, as the, Mr. Burgess and Ms. Maples goes back and works on an updated draft of this, if they would deem that it's not quite ready for, you know, you want to get more feedback on different pieces, that we do have it come as a report at the board for information, so that if there's, we don't get into a wordsmithing on the action itself, if we can avoid that. Or if there is some way, because we've had broad conversation open to the public tonight, that we can, you know, if they put out, if they're a draft version, put that out, so you can get feedback on specific things. The quick, you know, in terms of feedback that you just asked for those two resolves, I would be cautious of some of that, and not, I didn't catch all of what you said, but if we're already doing it, let's continue making sure that this goes. But I would not want those to be distracted from, and there may be other steps that the administration may need to put in play as this plays out across the country, as legal things are decided, and I would not want to tie up the administration, you know, as long as we have very clear, get those messages out, like you have both in the spring quickly and this fall, and continue that effort. So, I'm a little bit concerned, and I just don't know enough about what you said, I would want to think about it.
Ms. Doolian, wrapping up comments.
Yeah, I think I would advise against a communication plan in a resolution because of FERPA, and I, we're dealing with students, and I think that even notifying ICEs in a certain area, outwards, I think, I think that, I would leave that to administration. I would not be in favor of putting a communication plan in our resolution because of the potential sensitive nature of that. And that, again, is to protect student privacy. The other question that I had was, now, we are referencing a lot of legal things here, and we are referencing a lot of law, a lot of federal law, a lot of state law, a lot of our policies. So, I'm just hopeful that this also passes the legal sniff test. So, that's, and I know that we've wordsmithed a lot tonight.
Yeah, so I think when we get it to another workable draft, before it comes to the board, we'll send it through legal, now the Wednesday night timeline may not be possible for that, but we can certainly have legal review it prior to Tuesday and give legal's feedback on that. And I like the idea of it potentially being a report at next week's meeting, and then, you know, September 17th, or whatever, the next 16th, taking final action on it.
Ms. Doolian.
Yes, and I have a follow-up. Thank you, President Burnett. As, to Mr. Doran's point, and I think that you're trying to do it here too, in a lot of the ways that you word everything, but I just want to reiterate that it's balancing, it's, the way that it needs to be worded is a balance between what we already do and not, not leading to an assumption that we don't already do this. And so, thank you for just considering that as you're rewriting it, or as you're looking at the language. I think that in some instances, I know what you're doing, which is that you want to affirm that we do this, but I also think, is that also doing the inverse of showing people or making people consider, are they saying that because they don't do that already? So, in places like, Mr. Doran, I think had a few word suggestions, like continue and words like that, that show that we are already doing this, and that we are affirming this, it is, it's, we are reaffirming this, the activities that we already do. It's nothing new. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doolian. Thank you, Board, for your work tonight. Thank you for the conversation. Mr. Burgess and Ms. Maple, we will kick this back to you. Please get with Dr. Minert and work on the next draft, and then we can speak about how you guys would like you guys would like to approach the agenda next week as well. With that, thank you guys so much for your work tonight. Thank you to the listening public who is sticking in there with us. You guys have a great night, and we are now adjourned.